I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 17, 2022, to order. All aye for the Pledge of Allegiance and then with the invocation by Ray Snell.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Help as we are gathered together. Help us to have meaningful and productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. We pray for your guidance in these matters before us and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work through a spirit of enthusiasm and cooperation. If we do disagree, let it only be on the content of the issues. Help us to be creative problem solvers and to focus on what is best for community as we put these decisions into action. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baird.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Pulaski.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Shotwell.
Here.
State President.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards or recognition this evening. Is there any communications or positions to present to the clerk? Seeing none, there are no special orders nor public hearings, we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. First round of public comment.
Hi, my name is Crystal Pfeiffer. I'm from Hanover Township. I am asking for your vote for the open position of the Parks Department Board. I am passionate about the parks and spending time outside. As a natural health professional, I teach holistic ways of getting and staying healthy, and I am excited at the idea of getting to be a part of families, creating memories while being in the park. As you all know, from what I told you last time, our favorite pastime is park hopping, and as my kids have been grown, it is a wonderful memory of mine that I keep always. I believe in being a good steward of our residents' money, and I want to understand why we are spending our money so that we can be responsible with their finances. I have served in many capacities in my church and community throughout the years. I am a responsible, hardworking, self-starter, and I enjoy doing all the behind-the-scenes work it takes to get the job done. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tammy Bates. I'm sure most of you know me from being on this side of the table as a court administrator for District Court. I've retired. I did so in December of this year, last past year, and now I am seeking a seat on your board. I am here to officially announce my candidacy for County Commission, District One. This is something that I did not decide on right away. I can tell you that public administration has been in my background and in my life for the last 32 years. I've served this county as the court administrator for 20 years and was in a leadership role before that. I have budget knowledge. I have knowledge of this county when we had superb leadership. I have knowledge of this county when we've had not-so-superb leadership. I believe that the leadership here that we have now is good leadership, and I would like to add to that, and I would like to be a voice for my community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Summer Snell, and I'm with Advisor Care Home Health. We are in such a rife time right now with the Michigan auto no-fault world, and here is why. In 2019, our home care rates were cut by 55%. In companies like mine, who were charging $30 to $35 an hour to insurance companies, we are now only being paid by insurance companies, $14 to $16 an hour, and we pay our aides $15 to $18 an hour. So it's just not sustainable. Almost all home care companies have closed in the state of Michigan, and these catastrophic survivors are alone and without care. We have clients ranging from elders to adults to children under 10 years old on a vent with around-the-clock nursing care, and they're not going to be able to get it anymore. Where are these kids supposed to go if all the home care companies close? I get calls from potential clients every day saying, "My company's closing. Can you please help?" And it kills me that I cannot help them because of what we're going through right now. We are in a very heartbreaking time, and we know there was a problem with companies before gouging insurance companies, but they added utilization review. And what that means is insurance companies review the bills and make sure that they're not paying more than they need to. But because of this new bill with the 55% cut, that is all they're paying. I speak to adjusters every day to try to get our bills paid, and their answer is, "We are paying with the 55% cut according to the bill." So they're not even reviewing the bills anymore. So I come to you hoping to find a resolution, to adopt the resolution or a letter of support. And I have copies here, too, that I can give you after. Thank you.
My name is Augne, first name Scott. I am running for County Commissioner's seat in District Three against Corey Kennedy. I assume that most of you hate my guts, which is quite all right. I'm running on principles. Had Corey Kennedy been responsive to my requests on election investigation before at least looked into it with me, I probably wouldn't be running again. But it's quite clear the Jackson County Republican Party is filled with a bunch of spineless wimp males, and I'm running to hopefully give the party some guts as far as being a male. I got information today. I know Amanda Kirkpatrick has been cooperating with the Secretary of State and Jonathan Bay, the Director of Bureau of Elections, basically reporting on us, and I just got information today. They're trying to shut down the sheriff of Bay County who's conducting an excellent investigation into the general election of 2020. I have an ongoing investigation. It is continuing. I have a bunch of legal things I will be distributing within the next couple of weeks to various members of the county government. But I wanted to discuss the Jackson County Sheriff and his relative connection to all this, but he's not here tonight, and I'd rather speak directly when he's here. But a couple of months ago, I gave each one of you a history file of what was in the qualified voter file in the Bureau of Elections, and I didn't hear from one of you except Commissioner Baird. And Commissioner Duckham wears his Trump orange hat and everything else. I didn't hear a word from him. And I'm extremely disappointed in you phony Republican males, because I tell you what, this affects all of us. It affects your constituents. Several laws have been broken. Amanda Kirkpatrick, I believe, has hired an attorney, and I'm going to find out some more information because gag orders are going to have to be put in place on several people. But you're going to find out more about this, and Amanda, you know what, all we're interested in is uncovering the lawbreaking, and you have stonewalled me from day one.
Mr. Augne, you're to address the Board of Commissioners, please.
I'll leave.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Hello, Jennifer Biddinger. I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to bounce off that. The whole, I'm very passionate about election integrity right now myself. And I have been going to each of the boards that I have been visiting to make sure that my authorities and anyone who is in any position of leadership and authority is aware of the movie that is out called 2,000 Mules, which is definite proof. For those who say, "Show me the proof," well, here is some of the proof, but there is a lot more out there that is being exposed about the not-so-most-perfect election in history. If you weren't a believer prior to watching the movie, you would understand that there was a lot of fraudulent activity that occurred. And as leaders, I want to encourage as many of you that have any power or authority to use what you can to help correct the situation. So thank you very much.
I would just like to echo Jennifer Biddinger's suggestion that you watch that movie. I watched it and fortunately paid so that I could also watch the question-and-answer session afterwards. There's a lot more to it than you would think, and it's a lot smaller than you would think in terms of area. And oddly enough, highly Republican areas can be more subjected to ballot-box stuffing than other areas because it's less noticed. So I would ask you to watch the movie, watch the things that are coming out, and keep an open mind, and let's address these issues. Thank you.
Peter Warne with 142 West Pearl Street. On March 31, 2022, Eric Nielsen was shot and killed by Columbia Township Police. They were responding to a call for a medical emergency. I contacted Chief Jay Niles and made a FOIA request. I found out that Columbia Township does not use body cams, and he denied my request for the dash cam because there's still an ongoing investigation by the state police, and that report has not yet been submitted to our county prosecutor, Jerry Zarzinko. I want to point out that this is another white person getting shot and this time killed by police here in Jackson County. I am not okay with this. There were people up here last time, I think the young woman in back, talking about appreciation for our police, and that is important. They have a difficult job, and they protect our lives and our property. But we also need police accountability, and I have some people that I want to call out because I don't see that we're holding the police accountable. Phil Duckham, this issue happened in your bail wick, and you're not here, so I can't call you out. Darius, you did not help me at all on the other issue, the 10-15-21 shooting of Aaron Schuppelman. He was only shot in the left buttock. He was not killed, but once again, there was no accountability, and you didn't help at all. Finally, I want to call M Live, and they're not here anymore, but they used to be. We used to have a reporter. We used to get some information, or maybe we do have one, yes. I don't know. But they do not do anything anymore. I mean, we can get 15 articles about a shooting in Grand Rapids that was horrid, that should have never ever happened, that was hard to watch, but we get no articles, no release of footage, nothing, no information down here on what goes on in Jackson County. I am not happy with these things. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Any more public comments? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. No special meetings of standing committees at this time. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 19, 2022 business meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved. Support.
I have a motion in support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertaining a motion for the consent agenda, please. Moved by Ray Snell, supported by Darius. Items for removal. Commissioner Baird. Item 10A under consentic calendar is equalization professional services contract, which will move to general government 14B. Item 11A, health department contract for medical director services shall be moved to item 15B. Understanding Committee, human services. Any other items for removal for discussion later? Hearing none. Commissioners, ready to post? You may vote. I may yes. Consent calendar has amended, passed unanimously. We are at item 13. Standing Committee reports chair, public safety and transportation chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have some appointments. The first is for the Community Corrections Advisory Board. There is a public seat of the Communications and Media Description. We did not have an applicant at the time of committee, however, there was an application, and it was just late getting to Commissioners. That applicant is Dennis Warden.
Is that a nomination, sir?
That is.
Any other nominations from the floor?
Dennis Warden. Yes.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Okay. The next appointment is for the jury board. It's from a recommendation of the Circuit Court judges. Unfortunately, we have not received that yet, so we will try to get one for next month. That will conclude our business for tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Michael, could you please reach out to the Chair of the Circuit Court to get us a nomination, please? Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, General Government, this evening chaired by Vice Chairman Rod Walls. Commissioner Walls. He's getting it corrected.
Okay. The Upper Grand River Watershed Alliance. The Upper Grand River Riverside Alliance, there was six seats open. Current members are Jeffrey Snyder, Shaka Singh, Kenny Price, James Seitz, Glenn Remington, and Todd Zeller. The applicants were Jeffrey Snyder, Shaka Singh, Kenny Price, James Seitz, Sarah Baumann, and Tom Zeller. Committee recommendations were Jeffrey Snyder, Shaka Singh, Kenny Price, James Seitz, Sarah Baumann, and Todd Zeller. Are there any other nominations from the floor?
Is there support from Snell? I'm sorry. So it came from that side of the room. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
The next board is the Parks Board. The current member was Joseph Beeman. He had left the board. The applicants for this spot was Russ Jennings, Aaron Demick, Lavery, and Crystal Pfeiffer. Committee recommendation was Crystal Pfeiffer.
Any nominations from the floor?
Mr. Chair, if I am in order, I'd like to nominate Aaron Demick.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, we have two nominations. Could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baird.
Crystal Pfeiffer.
Commissioner Walls.
Crystal Pfeiffer.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Pfeiffer.
Commissioner Pulaski.
Pfeiffer.
Commissioner Alexander.
Pfeiffer.
Commissioner Williams.
Demick.
Commissioner Snell.
Pfeiffer.
Chairman Shotwell.
Pfeiffer.
Crystal, congratulations. You won 7-1. Vice Chairman Walls.
The last seat is for the Economic Development Corporation. The current member was Cynthia Richardson. The applicant was Cynthia Richardson, and the committee recommendation was Cynthia Richardson.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Cynthia Richardson has been named to the EDC. Vice Chairman Walls.
That should conclude our business, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I'll get it. At this time, under general government, we will be discussing the equalization and professional services contract. I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion in support. Commissioner Baird.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have concerns with this contract. The, I can make this short. The contract is between the County of Jackson and the, all right, let me see. Okay, this is between the County of Jackson and Assessing Solutions. If it's between the County of Jackson, then I would like to see the County of Jackson be the signature, not the head of the Equalization Department. So I would move that the signature area be James E. Shotwell Jr., Chairman, Jackson County Board of Commissioners.
Is that an amendment, Commissioner Baird, or are you making a motion? Because if it's a motion, it's out of order. You can amend the motion that's on the floor at this time. Is that what you'd like to do?
I'd like to amend the motion.
We have an amendment that's been put forward. Is there support?
Question to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
The way that the contract is currently submitted without the amendment, isn't this the normal practice that we've used in the past?
Administrator Controller?
It's been inconsistent, to be frank.
Is it inconsistent?
Yeah. The Equalization Director brought forth the contract, and we've had it where I've signed it, the Chair's signed it, we've had Department Heads sign. So what's legal, the legal part of it is, the County Commissioners approve in the contract.
I see.
So it's a matter of style, or, but it's still legal either way.
I got you.
It doesn't exist without you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
I'll ask one more time. Any support to the amendment? Hearing none, the amendment dies for lack of support. Returning to the original motion.
Commissioner, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend the original motion on the cover page. It currently says contract for professional services between the County of Jackson. I would like County of Jackson taken out and Jackson County Equalization Director submitted in that place. That way the...
Is there support to the motion? Is there support to the motion? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of support. Madam Clerk, could you call the vote, please? You can post it. That's fine. Commissioners, you can vote as it appears on your screen. Passes 7-1. Thank you, Commissioner Walls. At this time, we've arrived at Standing Committee Report, Human Services chaired by Commissioner Earl Pulaski. Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under item 15A, we have no appointments to bring forward this month. I propose to move forward to item 15B.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item 15B is the contract that was pulled from the consent agenda relating to the medical director, between the medical director and the county. It comes forward as a recommendation from committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that in the form of a motion, sir?
Yes, sir, it is.
Support. I have motion and support from Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Baird. Please use your microphone, sir.
I turned it off, resting my arm on it. I would like to amend the motion, line three of the title, where Jackson County Health Department appears. I would like that to be replaced with County of Jackson, since it is the County of Jackson that is signing.
Any support for the amendment? Any support for the amendment? Hearing none, we move back to the original motion. Commissioner Baird.
I would like to amend the original motion, page three. Since the current document says this is with the County Health Department, I would like to see the signature change from James E. Shotwell Jr., Chairman, Jackson County Board of Commissioners, to Christine Pluta, Health Officer.
Is that in the form of a motion, sir, or amendment, sir?
Yes.
Any support? Any support for the amendment? Hearing none, back to the original motion. Madam Clerk, could you read the motion, please? Sorry.
Staff report's fine.
The requested motion is to approve the proposed contract between Jackson County and Dr. Dennis Chernin for medical director services.
We have a motion in support to that. Commissioners, you can vote. Motion passes 7-1. Motion passes 7-1. Commissioner Polaski?
That will conclude our business tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any unfinished business? Seeing or hearing none, new business?
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy?
Under new business, I'd like to make a motion to refer to the county administrator and director of Jackson County Department of Transportation, a proposal to fund additional road projects in Leoni Township with the remainder of the funds that Jackson County received in 2022 for its share of the medical marijuana excise tax to be matched 50-50 with Leoni Township.
I have a motion. Do I have support? We have a motion and support, discussion. So understand, Commissioners, this will come back next month, and we'll take it right through the committee cycle. This isn't a decision tonight. Okay? There'll be an explanation given through the committee system. Sure. This should be posted, so you can vote in front of you Commissioners. Motion passes 7-1. Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Any other new business, Commissioners? Seeing or hearing none, we've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. Each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time.
Hi.
Aye.
Melissa Hiller, Summit Township. I really didn't plan to speak, but just to add on to a couple of things that were said. I am also a big supporter of the police. My husband is a retired deputy of 23 years, and, but I do, of course, think that they are, you know, they should be held accountable. I don't know the story, but I thought that was an interesting comment that he made. You know, you can still be a supporter of the police and still want to get down to the bottom of something that was done wrong. And then the other comment I wanted to make, for what it's worth, is just, I'll add a third comment about, or a third vote for 2000 Mules. If anybody has not watched it, I highly recommend. To me, at this point in the game, if you still don't believe there was voter fraud, at least enough, enough to turn the votes, then you're choosing not to know because the proof is out there. So thumbs up to that movie.
Hello, Sean Lee. I live in Leoni Township, and my road is absolutely horrible. So I would greatly appreciate it if some of this medical marijuana money, and I know there's a lot of it, could be put towards the roads in my township. Every week, I see a truck go by with a trailer behind it and three or four guys with shovels putting these black rocks in the potholes every week. It doesn't fix anything. All it does is just get thrown back out of the potholes, and next week they come through and they put more rocks in there. That's not the right way to fix the roads. And I remember what our governor ran on. She said, "Let's fix these damn roads." She didn't, she hasn't done it. So remember that next voting session.
I just want to thank you again for allowing me to speak on the auto no-fault, and I know my voice is shaky, but I'm just so passionate about this issue. My grandma's a catastrophic, and I'm an occupational therapist by trade, and I treat catastrophic patients. And to see them and their care being taken away is just heart-wrenching. So I urge you just to, you know, adopt a resolution or do a letter of support, because these catastrophic people, I mean, it could be any one of us that have their world ripped apart and changed. They've already had so much taken away from them, and now we have to take them out of their homes. So I really urge you to help.
Peter Warmuth. I want to say that in my lifetime, I've watched three presidential elections be stolen. John Kennedy stole the election against Richard Nixon, thanks to Mayor Daley and the mob in Chicago. George W. Bush stole the election against Al Gore, thanks to his brother Jeb down in Florida. And there's a strong possibility that the election of Bush versus Kerry was also stolen due to election machine, playing with election machines in the state of Ohio. I do not believe that there was voter fraud of sufficient amount to change the election of Biden versus Trump. Thank you. And I've watched the movie.
Any other public comment? We've arrived at Commissioner comments. Commissioner Baird?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These two contracts that I wanted to, that I discussed tonight, I previously was told just accept these. They're written by our attorneys. Attorneys reviewed it, so of course they're good. Well, I'm afraid they're not good. And let me tell you now what I was trying to avoid. The Equalization Board, that is a contract between the County of Jackson and Assessing The contract is with the County of Jackson, and yet the man who's the Equalization Director gets to sign it. You look at the contract between the Health Department and Dr. Cherrin, that's a contract with the Health Department. And unlike the Equalization Department, the department head was not allowed to sign this contract. So we got one department head that's male, and he seems somehow able and competent to sign contracts. But we have a woman in the Health Department, even though the contract is with the Health Department, we had, we had to find another man to sign the contract. And I think we've set ourselves up for a perfect gender, gender discrimination lawsuit.
Any other Commissioner comments? We have no closed session tonight. Entertaining a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and support, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried.